Let me cut this on. All right, thank you for being patient with us. We're gonna go get started even though we still have a glitch. Up until the point of public, I'm sorry, property standards here, where we will be voting, we may do that manually also. But this time I'm gonna call to be in order. Let us stand, please.
The South of Councilman James Flory, stay seated. Councilman, you wanna lead us in prayer and Mr. Bowman, please in the place.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give you thanks this day for opportunity to gather here as citizens of this great city. We pray for the leadership for the mayor, administration, all the workers. We ask God your guidance today as we make decisions. In Christ's holy name we do ask and pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Clerk, Ms. Jackie, would you call the Rose?
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Bowman.
Here.
Councilman Flory.
Here.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Everson.
Here.
Councilwoman Lynch. Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Thank you. Certainly, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge and say how thankful and grateful I am that my friend and your friend, colleague, Mr. James Flory is back with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking fine and well and, you know, he had surgery almost.
Two weeks ago.
Three weeks? Three weeks ago tomorrow. And God has brought him through. And that is wonderful. He got in hospital two weeks ago, I guess, almost, and recouped at home. And his wonderful caretaker is here, Patricia Flory. Thank you for seeing after him for us. And he's back, ready to get back in the grind. And the timing, timeliness couldn't be better. So, thank you. At this point, well, certainly tomorrow I will be accepting my motion to accept the minutes of our previous conference and city council meeting. But at this point, I will ask council members, are there any words recognition of distinguished guests or communication? And let me start, if you please. I have with us today a very distinguished man who works with us diligently, Eric England, who is the director of our deporter Shreveport Bojor. He had some communication that he wanted to present to the council. And Mr. England, are you still here? I'm over, sir. Let's welcome Mr. Eric England of the Port Shreveport Bojor.
Chairman Bradford, members of the city council, Mayor Tyler. My name is Eric England. My address is 6,000 Doug Adaway Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71115. The purpose of my comments is to provide an overview of the positive work and relationships that we have with the city and the administration and a recent event involving one of our customers obtaining a building permit for an expansion. As you may know, the city and port have several existing partnerships in place for economic development and also for the safety and for the well-being of the citizens in southeast Shreveport. For example, in the late 90s, the port constructed City of Shreveport Fire Station Number 20 at the corner of Flor Nor Lucas and Highway 1 for approximately $1.6 million. In addition to constructing this fire station, the port also purchased fire trucks for this station. Our operating agreement is today, as it was when it was originally signed, which is to reimburse the city 50% of the operations cost of that fire station. Every month, we receive an invoice from the city showing the total cost run the station, and we issue a check for that 50% back to the city. Along the way, we've ensured that the station is equipped with modern firefighting trucks. In fact, just a few short years ago, we partnered with the city to purchase two brand-new pumper and ladder trucks for the station. And we continue to provide the insurance for the station and these trucks. While this station, and as I'm reminded from the Shreveport Fire Department, the whole Shreveport Fire Department and their power and their resources, if necessary for that matter, provide service to the port, we're proud that the port is partnering with the City of Shreveport to provide Class 1 response for southeast Shreveport. Shifting gears just a minute, also, when the port constructed its $18 million water and sewer system in the mid-'90s, the city and port crafted a CEA which provides 10% of the gross revenues from the operations at the port water and sewer system, or the O and M of the line which you all provide. All revenues above the debt service flow to the city. It's a great, great win for both parties. And when the debt has been retired, the city gets 100% of the cash flow off of that system. Given the large industrials such as Pratt, Bentley, these bonds can easily be retired earlier than the original amortized retirement date. Estimated revenues for 2017 are 2.5 million, and that number will continue to grow as we continue to lease land to industrials at the port. There's more to tell, but in the interest of time, I'll continue with other information. But what you gather is a framework of collaboration and teamwork, and most importantly, communication that we have with the administration and the council. The port is home to 17 companies operating on premises leased from the port. I need to emphasize, since Hurricane Katrina, since Hurricane Katrina and the laws that followed, buildings such as the ones at the port are now required by state law to receive a building permit. Prior to Hurricane Katrina, development at the port was exempt from this process altogether. As the port is in the parish, our customers apply for permits from the city per year agreement with the Caddo Parish Commission. In 1996, the port developed and recorded in both Caddo and Bojor parishes land use and master plan development covenants. These are on file in the courthouses of Caddo and Bojor parishes. From the period of time of recordation of these CCRs, as we call them, until Hurricane Katrina, our process for customer and port development did not include a building permit nor any MPC approval process. Even after the law which required application for a building permit changed post-Katrina, our process for customer and port development did not include any MPC approval process. From the CCRs, just one quote, "The planning and development of land owned and managed by the port is subject to covenant restrictions established by the port commission. Such covenants are a part of the land lease agreements entered into between the port tenants and the port commission. The plan establishes guidelines and enforcement procedures to ensure orderly, attractive, and lasting development which will preserve and enhance the property's land value." Earlier this year, when one of our customers began an expansion of their facility at the port complex, I received a phone call from an MPC staff member, a phone call from a staff member. He told me during the call that the customer would need to adhere to the MPC process because the new executive director would not honor the longstanding agreement the former executive director had honored for over two decades of our development. Again, this agreement, as he would call it, is that no MPC process, rather, no MPC approval process is necessary. I told the MPC staff member I did not agree with their position. From that call, I never heard from anyone at the MPC regarding that matter. No letters were written, no emails were sent. We concluded the MPC executive director reversed his decision and adhered to the longstanding agreement. No documentation in the file, just a phone call. Fast forward to last week, I received a phone call from someone connected to the expansion of Morrison Dixon. As you know, this past summer was a major milestone with this outstanding family and company, 175 years in business. When they chose to stay in our region in the early 2000s, they could have gone to East Texas, but our community banded together to keep them here. It was a proud time for all involved. The person connected to the project gave me the briefness follows, quote, along the lines, "Just so you know, the MPC is not approving whatever is necessary for the building permit to be issued on the Morrison Dixon expansion. Subcontractors are considering walking off the job, and this would cause delays." I thought my conversation earlier this year regarding our position sufficed, but apparently not. Shortly thereafter, almost immediately thereafter, I contacted our mayor, since the permis department is in the city. I fully explained the situation to her, and we developed a plan to solve that issue. And that plan will be forthcoming by close of business, which is to provide you all of the, basically, our opinion, which will cite Supreme Court cases, appellate court cases, AG opinions, and the laws which says the port is exempt from this process. And I thank you for that, Mayor. And thank you for allowing me to share this situation with you, council members. I bring it to your attention, as I understand the UDC has been adopted by the MPC and is set for your review and consideration in the near term. In a letter to Mark Sweeney Friday, I wrote, "Before the UDC is considered by the City of Shreveport and the Caddo Parish Commission, all references to the MPC having jurisdictional authority or any related control whatsoever on any development at the port complex and/or on port-owned land must be removed." And council members, upon your review and consideration of the UDC, please take the necessary steps to remove the port complex and land owned by the port. This will bring the UDC in compliance with our interpretation of the state law. And I just will close with this. These recent events are not in keeping with the longstanding relationships and positive working environment that we've had with our partners in this region, like this mayor and her administration, City of Shreveport, the council, in recruiting, but in the case of Morrison Dixon, retaining the core of job creation, job retention, existing companies. If they were, this whole predicament could have been avoided. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. Chairman Bradford.
Yeah, Mr. England, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the situation?
Well, Mr. England did call me, and I asked him to provide me the documents to show that they were exempt. I've not received that yet, but he promised that he's gonna get those to me, and I know that he will. And when he does, I'll be able to provide that to council members.
And the city attorney has been briefed on this scenario?
I've just mentioned it to him, and I told him that I'm waiting to get the documents so that he can review it also as the city attorney for this body and for the mayor's office.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. England. Let me be clear now. In the reference that was given to you by the MPC was the UDC?
Today, I received a letter from MPC Executive Director Mark Sweeney in the hours before this meeting. Prior to that, we had received nothing in writing, no emails, no letters, just a phone call that properties at the port would have to go under an MPC process. In the time that I've received that letter, which again is measured in hours, I've already forwarded to our attorney. Our attorney is confident that our opinion on this matter frankly trumps the position that the MPC has brought forth.
Well, my communication was that the UDC, as it relates to this body, has not been either presented with or adopted in any form. So, if he's referencing, if this issue, which I am disturbed by, let me just say that, I, even with or without a UDC, this city cannot afford or have the luxury of rejecting any expansion or new development of business in this city and in this parish. We gotta be careful in structuring any type of document that would impede or hinder new business development, especially a 175-year-old company who has proven themselves to be a great corporate entity within the city. So, if that's, and I'm gonna allow you and administration to communicate and move and let administration bring forward her findings, and then I think we'd be more prepared to render our action at that time. But I just did not want it to be that the UDC was referenced as the object that was hindering this. Now, tell me, where are they, the company, in regards to their further construction? Have they terminated, I mean, have they suspended it?
They have not. They are in the process of finishing up, if you will, slab work, and this is a critical point before they move forward, because this is where, of course, all the other trades, all the other items that are needed to go forward beyond the slab construction. We need to, our goal, and when I say our goal, in working with Mayor Tyler and the port, our goal is to immediately provide the documentation that is needed to counter whatever citations the MPC executive director is citing. That's the first and foremost. And as you say, it's absent of the UDC. The UDC is a separate issue. We're dealing with the issue at hand, which is the MPC executive director claiming to exercise control over development on port-owned land.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my position is that we will allow the process that you and the mayor have agreed on to move forward, and she will, I think, in a timely manner, you know, make the council aware of where we are in our standing regarding the state and regarding your jurisdiction within your parameter of the campus of the port.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? Okay. We look forward to moving forward, and the mayor, we're looking forward to your response.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. England.
Okay. Any other council member have any communications? Okay. If not, Mayor?
No announcements today. Tomorrow, we'll have several announcements, and we will have a small presentation done by Economic Development Director, Ms. Akry. And so, but I'd like to also welcome Mr. Flory back and say that we've been praying for him.
Thank you, Mayor.
And it looked like those prayers did work.
They did.
And so, we were excited to see him back on board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not gonna steal anything, but I would have to congratulate you on the Saturday conversation. I thought it was well-attended. I thought it was outstanding with the presentations and facilitators. I think we have a plan. So, I want to congratulate you and your staff for doing such an outstanding event.
Thank you, sir. And we'll talk just a little bit about it tomorrow.
Sure.
And we want to thank all the council members who stayed with the process for us.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I mean, I was a tremendous launch into what we're gonna accomplish in this city in regards to crime and violence.
Thank you, sir.
Creating an opportunity for a lot of good conversations to happen, too. I mean, even, you know, away from the main conversation, there were just people who got a chance to get together and talk about subjects they don't always get a chance to talk about, so.
Absolutely. Great connections. Thank you also, ma'am.
We look forward to your expansion on this tomorrow, okay?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Reports, property standards. Anybody have any inquiries for Mr. Green on property standards? I see none on the screen, but I will say that, and let me just address this to the mayor and to the director of property standards. I'm getting a lot of feedback, and I can say that, and I'm not gonna expound on them, but there's a lot of inconsistencies in the way we address our property standards issues. Some of them is driven by community, some are driven, you know, the community in which these property standard issues arise, and some are obviously driven by some other things. But there are a lot of inconsistencies on how we move within property standards. There is a property standards committee meeting tomorrow at 1:30. And let me invite council members who are part of the committee, as well as others, to be there. I spoke with the chair lady today, and she has some issues that she wants to bring forward, but we'll move forward with that. But I just, the lady off of Ziegler called me today again. She wants to come down tomorrow and say something. I invited her, I welcome her to come. That's one of those inconsistencies that I was referring to, that we moved a month ago to demolish a house that, and then there's some properties that has been vacant for almost 20 years, and we can't move on those properties. And I just wanna, and get to what is the criteria of doing some of the things that we do in respect of community.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
We'll get to that.
And if I just may make a comment, you know, I think you've said it often, one size doesn't fit all.
Yes.
And so, what we try to do is have a standard, but if we have some emergency-type situations, sometimes we have to push those up. I just want the committee to keep that in mind when they meet.
I understand.
One size does not fit all.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other inquiries for Mr. Green? Thank you, Mr. Green. Do we have any hearing today on that?
No. There's no property standards hearings.
No, not today.
Good. Me and James Flory can go have dinner then.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. See here. Okay. Electronis, back up. Mr. Paul Davenport, who are you? Mr. Davenport, I just want to make you aware, you gave me a request to speak forum, and on Mondays, our ruse does not allow for public comments. You're welcome to come back tomorrow, if you please. Now, and if the council members at the time, they wanna suspend that rule and let you speak, they have that privilege, but I just want you to know, I didn't want you to stick around where you may or may not have that privilege. So, if you kindly come back tomorrow, you will have that opportunity. Thank you. All right. Any confirmation of appointments today?
No, so there's not, Mr. Chairman. There'll be some for introduction, they'll be spoken to at the end of this agenda.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Ms. Gonzalez is here today, so.
Who?
So, we could bring her.
We've got three that will be on the report.
Introduce?
Yes.
We received from the mayor some appointments to the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, Ms. Jean Ware, Brian Hollins, Mrs. Gonzalez, and Mr. Roland Ramides. These will be up for confirmation at the next council meeting, but I see that four of those persons are in the audience, if any council member wants to bring them up.
Okay. Well, let's move forward with the legislative agenda and get those introductions on the record, and then we'll be prepared to move on that proper time.
I mean, since they're here, don't we want to ask them any questions?
Oh, do we want to ask them any questions prior to them being introduced? Okay. Who's here? Who's here now?
All three of them.
All three of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have those names in front of me.
They're on the bottom of the agenda.
They're on the bottom of the agenda?
Clerks report.
Okay. I'm sorry. That is the practice, so I apologize.
I would just say, since they're here, I hate to make them come a second time.
No, that's the customer. We don't want them to come second time.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
All right.
Introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Jean Ware. What else do you want to tell you about? I'm a 42-year retiree from Caddo Public Schools, having served as a high school mathematics teacher, middle school and high school assistant principal in charge of instruction, interim principal, and retired as supervisor of mathematics for middle schools and high schools.
Ms. Ware, you are familiar with the workings of the, of the, uh...
I have the overall picture, sir.
Okay. And I almost said the Secret Service Board. Well, thank you, and we look forward to, and I think we did receive, electronic means the mayor's recommendations, suggestions. Okay. Who's next? You say your name and give us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, council members, Madam Mayor. My name is Carolyn Spate Gonzalez, and I first want to apologize, don't let this hurt you. It was not any crime or anything in the city. It was my klutziness as I was jogging and my dog ran out in front of me in Betty, Virginia Park, and the cement won this fight. But I am a native of Shreveport, and I moved away from Louisiana for about 20 years after graduating from Caddo Parish Schools. And while I was away, I went to business school and served in the business world for a little bit, where I worked with organizations on strategy and operations, and worked a lot with employees then, and then, you know, moved around the city and the world a little bit. And more recently, and probably most relevant to this appointment that I'm very honored to have, by the way, is that I was chief of staff and deputy superintendent of Miami-Dade County Public Schools, where I managed over 500 employees, but one of that group of people that I managed was human resources and five, we had 50,000 employees and five unions, and spent a lot of my time doing exactly what I will be doing and as appointed to this board if it's approved. So, thank you. I know some of you, but I have not met all of you, and I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
And I'm just asking, are you familiar with the workings of the Fire and Police Civil Service Board?
Yes, sir. I've gotten an overview from Mr. Crawford, so I, and I've gotten some documents to read, which I've read, but I also know until you're on it, you don't, you're not real familiar with the workings. But from what I can read, I do feel like I have a somewhat of a familiarity coming into it.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, council, mayor, Brian Hollins served 28 years with the Shreveport Fire Department, retired in 2009 as a chief training officer for the Shreveport Fire Department. I'm presently the pastor of Abounding Grace Ministry, only the best church in Shreveport, Louisiana. Of course, y'all already know that, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you. But I'm excited about and thankful to serve on the civil service board.
I'm sure you're very familiar with it.
Yes, sir.
How do you view the board as an effective tool to address some of the concerns and issues of those entities?
Absolutely. An effective tool.
You view it as being fair?
Do I view the board as being fair? Uh, yes.
You can be fair, even though you was on the, a member of the Fire Department.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just in time, Ronnie.
Ronnie made it just in time.
Mr. Ramides is the fourth appointment?
We're about to vote on you.
Yes. This is a reappointment.
Ronnie Ramides, 1200 Marshall, Shreveport, happy to answer any questions you have.
And you're currently on the board?
I do. For the past year, I believe.
For the past year?
Yes.
Okay. How do you, how do you view the board at this point? Do you think it's working in the interest of those who submitting their grievances?
I would say it's consistently in their favor.
In the favor of the grievances? Okay.
Yeah, it would.
And with three new members, you see any interruption in the continuity of the cases that are before you?
I see that, I believe that the decisions may be fair. I mean, I don't know the other applicants, but I don't know, I don't think there would be a disruption in their due process, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah. I mean, again, we, the integrity of the board is what we're concerned about, that it doesn't, it doesn't show any bias or any difference between those that are coming for you. And they pledged that they could act in that manner, and I'm just asking you, through the board and this process of moving forward with new members, to continue that integrity and that style of standard.
Well, I don't think that, I mean, I think there's a process that can be taken past that if they feel like there's, that the justice wasn't served or due process wasn't allowed to the, either the city or the applicant, because I believe that, and I believe that's why I was appointed, was because of my history with the fire service, almost 10 years in the fire service, but that I've had up to as many as 65 employees at one time, so I feel like I bring a good balance there. And I understand that, you know, if every case that comes before the civil service board is overturned, I think maybe there's a reason that they're there, and not everyone that comes is guilty, and certainly that's not what I think when I see someone that's there. But we always like to look at the facts of the case, but I don't automatically assume that the person is innocent or guilty, and I don't, I definitely think that everybody needs a fair shake. Sometimes the administration is wrong, and sometimes that the employee is wrong. But I would say since I've been there over the past... But I would say, since I've been there over the past year, if you looked at the number of cases that are overturned, I think it would be overwhelming number of cases that's overturned.
Okay, thank you. I should attend a couple of meetings, and I anticipate I will. Any council members have any questions for these?
I'm impressed with their background and their willingness to serve in this capacity. You've got to remember that, that people that are willing to spend their time to the benefit of the city really should be applauded. So I appreciate y'all.
That is correct. All right, well, partners, we look forward to your confirmation at the time, at the proper time. And thank you for taking your time out to come down today. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Now, who do they replace, or are there people that are...
Yes, and we did send that information to the council.
That's on the email that y'all sent?
Yes.
Okay, I have it, I just didn't remember that.
And I can just quickly tell you who they replaced, if you want me to do that.
You will, ma'am.
Okay, I don't mind doing that. Ms. Ware actually is replacing Ms. Alma Rogers, who served, whose term expired August 15th, 2016. And I had 90 days to actually get the reappointments done. And of course, Ms. Rogers were serving, she served, I think, about one term. But I received notification from the Board of Examiners for the Civil Service statewide to say that these persons' terms had expired, so it was time for us to make the reappointments. So we went to the various entities that actually submit names to me. And they had to submit a list of names, at least two names per position. Southern University at Shreveport and LSU University here at Shreveport did submit those names according to the law.
Okay.
And we were able to look at the credentials of everybody and decided on these persons. So Ms. Ware is replacing Ms. Rogers. Pastor Hollins is replacing Mr. Lloyd Thompson, who had served three terms already. Mrs. Gonzalez is replacing Ms. Jennifer Hill from LSU. And of course, Mr. Remides is being reappointed, because he did finish out somebody else's term last year, this past year.
So Mr. Hollis and Ms. Ware are Southern University recommendations?
Yes.
And you chose between those recommendations that they presented to you?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
That's how it went. Okay, any other questions?
Any question for the mayor?
From my perspective, please convey that they do not need to come back to the follow-on meeting.
Yeah.
Because them being here the one time, I think it's more insufficient.
All right, I think you all did kind of establish that as protocol. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
May I ask a question, when you consider these tomorrow? Mr. Chairman and board, if you would consider suspending your rules and go ahead and make those appointments tomorrow? But if you feel like you can't, that would be okay? But if you could...
Are they meeting before our second meeting?
They're going to have a special meeting this week, because they have to extend the interim appointments on Chief Crump and Deputy Chief Gooden.
Okay.
And then they have a regularly scheduled meeting on November the 7th. But because I did send letters to each of the...
Former ones?
Former people, just to say thank you for your service on the board.
They pretty much dismissed out of their responsibility.
Right, right, and so I did, you know, thank them for serving the years that they did serve for this community, and that it was time for us to look at some other people who wanted to serve. And so, you know, I did not want there to be a lag there.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, and council members. Let's certainly take into consideration the timeliness and request of the mayor of getting these appointments expedited, if we chose tomorrow. And we'll consider that, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Just a quick question, how many people on that board?
Nine.
Is it nine? Nine.
And in the absence of them, would they even have a, I mean, I guess they could have a quorum, but you wouldn't have any, you would only have the uniform folks on there?
Ronnie's already appointed, so he's a reappointment, he would be on there. So that's four, that's five, and then there's one more. That's six, seven, eight of the new, so there's one more. Chief Wolfman, who's the other one? Dr. Jones is still on there, his appointment has not expired, so you do have two civilians on there.
You would have civilians, okay. I mean, I'm happy to...
Why did we have five show up? If we can go ahead and approve them as the mayor has requested earlier, it gives us a better opportunity to get that majority.
Absolutely.
No, no, I mean, I'm all for it, I was just asking, because if we absolutely needed them for a quorum regardless, then it would be a little bit of a no-brainer.
And I'll tell you, I'm a little concerned with the meeting, special meeting this week, because, you know, some of these folks who are former people on the board decide not to come to the meeting. We, we're out of time for the interim positions.
I got you, I got you, ma'am. That clock's ticking.
So that clock ends at the end of, actually, this month, on the 31st. And I need to have them back in place. So if they have a special call meeting Wednesday, we need to have a quorum there so that we can get those reappointments done. We just got the scores, I'll just say that. We just got the approved list on the 19th, which was this past, last Monday. And of course, they had not certified the list, so they're meeting to certify the list. And I can't start the interviews until I get the certified list. And of course, Chief Gooden just took the test on the 19th. However, he was appointed as interim back on July 31st. And so, we're out of time, and we just need to get those interim positions extended. And I can't do that until they meet and approve those. That's the position I'm in.
Well, and we understand. And I trust we'll act accordingly.
Okay, just trying to explain it.
You did well, and those appointments are well, too. All right, let's move forward with our general legislation, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Under the consent agenda legislation to adopt ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 176 authorizes AB Glenn properties located in GEO number to connect to the water and sewer systems of the city of Shreveport and otherwise provide respect there, too. 177 authorizes the mayor to execute an act of release of a 10-foot-wide utility servitude in the Burgundy Ridge subdivision unit number 6 in section 15, T 16 North and R 14 West. Resolution 178 suspends provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Corner Lounge for the Halloween block party. 179 suspends certain provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at Central Station for the band Bash. And 181 suspends provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages during Shreveport Rafters Reserve's winter season soccer games at Louisiana State University.
Mr. Chairman, I may ask tomorrow that we remove 181 from consent and postpone it until we ensure that we've got everything completed on that.
Okay, we'll follow your leadership and directions on that, council members. Any other questions or remarks regarding the introduction of these ordinance, of these resolutions? We may continue.
Regular agenda legislation resolutions on second reading, there are none. Introductions of resolutions not to be adopted prior to November the 8th, 2016. Resolution 180 stating that the city of Shreveport endorsement of venue solutions LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. That's the only one.
Any questions?
That's a good one.
That's a good one.
That's a good one.
All righty, and they just opened, what?
They just opened, we just...
Last month.
The mayor was there to cut the ribbon last month.
And Councilman Erickson was there, and was anybody else there from the council?
Councilman Jenkins was there.
Councilman Jenkins was there, yeah.
Okay.
Good project, put $15.5 million into the building, they'll be abated for about $76,000 for the next five years, but certainly worth it.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to November the 8th, 2016. Ordinance 119 amends the 2016 Airports Enterprise Fund budget. And ordinance 120 is the companion for that in the capital improvements area, amending the 2016 capital improvements budget.
Any questions regarding the introduction of these ordinances? We will be reviewing these, and I see no real issue right now, but we will be prepared to act, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir.
Let's continue.
Orders is on second reading and final passages. Ordinance 88A repeals ordinance number 88 of 2016 and to re-adopt an ordinance levying various taxes totaling 17 and 29 1/100ths mils per dollar on the property subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport for the 2016 in the amounts and for the purposes described herein.
Okay, we took this legislation and made that correction.
Make that correction.
To make it within compliance. Are there any questions regarding that, 88A? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we know of no tabled legislation that's coming off at this time.
All righty, thank you.
Leads us to property standards appeals, there are none for this evening. The next ones will be on November the 7th.
Okay, thank you. All right, as we move forward, report from officers, boards, and committees, are there any? We have some of those come forward, I know. Clerk?
Clerk, report.
Yes.
We've already talked about the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board appointments. We did receive an inquiry from Mr. Corbin, asking whether or not the first, second meeting in December, the administrative conference, the second administrative conference in December, could be moved, and anything that was on that agenda, we could hear at the regular council meeting. Because Monday is the Independence Bowl, I believe, and Tuesday is a regular council meeting. I don't see anything, and I think the city attorney agrees, that there is nothing that would prevent the council from doing that. Chose to suspend the rules, and as it relates to that meeting on the 26th, I think. And to hear anything that would normally be heard on the 26th, on the 27th, the regular council meeting.
All right, if there's nothing that would hinder us from doing that, let's move with that.
At some point, I guess we could either do a written resolution, or there could be a motion to do it. But we would need some action by the council to do that.
Well, we have at least three meetings before that, so we'll act on that, whatever's necessary to make that happen.
Either a motion or a written resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Additional communication, Mayor?
None. I do need to ask a question. Was staff notified about the property standard committee meeting tomorrow? Because they're saying that they didn't have any...
Ms. White?
Notification.
Was staff notified about the private standard meeting tomorrow?
Were they?
I got it.
Yeah. Okay.
I got the, I mean, council members, you all got the notification?
Send it out to all the normal people.
You sent it to the proper people? Okay.
We'll check on it.
Well...
Does check on it, because, I mean, of course, I've been in meetings all day, but my staff is saying they didn't get it, so maybe, I don't know.
Meeting was properly notified, if you can have someone there, we appreciate it.
Okay.
I mean, the notification went out in the proper way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the agenda items are on the, I mean, the subjects are on the agenda.
Okay.
So they can review those and be prepared to respond to those that's on there.
All right, then, I just...
We'll be ready.
Okay.
We'll be ready, I just didn't know if they had gotten that notification.
We're checking to see where it went.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. I don't have any other communications, Mr. Chairman and council members.
Thank you. All righty, I'm so proud of this council, they, Mr. Florrie got back, and they acting expeditiously.
Oh, my God.
I guess they didn't want to cause no, cause no...
Thank you so much.
Uncomfort to the councilmen.
We're not going to cause any stress.
But let me say this, council members now, we got a great task in front of us. I appreciate those who came out last Tuesday. Our special budget meeting, so we can get started, get some type of feel on where we are.
Meeting?
I believe the administration made a strong presentation. We will continue in our budget sessions on Saturday. And on Sunday. Any departments or entities that we do not get to on those two days, we will schedule a follow-up meeting of those departments to cover them also. I know that MPC have notified us that they won't be available this weekend. But we will allow them...
I don't see the...
Time to move on that. To move and receive their report and their budget items.
May I just make one correction? My CEO just found that, he got that information on property standard committee on the 18th of October.
Okay.
So I want to make sure, if I said it publicly, I need to correct it publicly. Thank you.
Right, Mr. Clerk, the administration did receive that notification?
October 18th.
One other note, there will be an executive session tomorrow.
Okay, yes, yes, that was clerk before, second, okay.
I'm sorry.
Today?
Yes, the noting, the special meeting agenda notes October 24th.
Okay. I take back, expedite this meeting.
It won't take long.
Maybe we'll wrap it up quick, let's get to it.
Okay, but let me, let me say, council members, we, and I said we have a great task in front of us. I know we all getting feedback from the public, our constituents and residents regarding the proposed Solid Waste Enterprise Fund and the $12 election fee. We're gonna, we're gonna move, we're gonna do what we feel is in the best interest of the city. I want you to give that serious consideration. Speak with your residents, speak with your constituents. If you need time to speak with the administration. But let's, let's not get bogged down on this. The quicker we can sort of reach a consensus, the better, because other areas of the budget is so greatly affected by whether or not we move as it was proposed, or if there's amendments in any way and any form. Because if we don't, we're gonna, we're gonna find ourselves at the 11-hour trying to make our budget work for next year. So if you have any ideas or any concerns that you feel we need to address and get on the table and off the table, I would appreciate if we can do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Crawford.
One of the things the mayor has instructed us to do is to go ahead and provide legislation. If you remember during our meeting last week, Mr. Thompson suggested we go ahead and provide legislation at the next council meeting to introduce the fee. And that way, we can go ahead and enter into the discussion, it can be voted on in the second November meeting. And it gives us ample opportunity, at least administratively, to make any necessary changes that we have to, based on that.
That'll give you that leeway.
The mayor has instructed us to take those proactive measures to try and provide us as much time as possible if we do have to make adjustments to the budget.
Okay, now, Mr. Thompson also suggested that we have another introduction of a resolution to create the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund.
That's part of the, that's part of the construction of the legislation board.
Okay, it'd be one, one or two? It'd be two legislative items?
Correct.
Okay, is that, is that correct, Mr. Thompson? All right, so if we move on that, then we should be able to have an idea of where we are, and you can adjust the budget accordingly.
Absolutely, so by the time we have the first meeting in December as required by law, everyone will have a firm understanding of what we will be moving forward with, in addition to the potential amendments that the council will offer at that time. But that matter should be resolved by then, based on the second vote in November.
Great, I like that, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, any other questions, communications from the council members? Have you on the clock? Okay, Billy, Mr. Corbin?
I know a couple of months ago, we had asked that a representative from the Shreveport Housing Authority come and address the council. And I know that, I guess, in the last two weeks or 10 days, I'm assuming everybody on council got a jump drive and a letter. Is that in replacement of somebody coming up and talking to us and allowing us to ask questions?
I didn't get it. I don't think I got a jump drive.
I did.
Did it come to your mailbox?
So what I'd like to have is, is I'd like to have their director at that podium in a coming meeting.
I did get a phone call from him. I don't think I got whatever this package was that y'all got, but it may have gone to, sometimes my mail goes to a different P.O. box, so maybe it went there. But I did get a phone call from him saying that he wanted to come and he threw out a couple of dates that he was available, and one of those, I believe, was the second meeting in November.
That would be good. I just didn't know where that was because with that request had been made some time back, and when I got a jump drive, I didn't know if that was their response to, in lieu of a meeting or just what.
So was it like just a presentation about?
That's everything you need to know.
I hadn't even looked at it yet. It made me mad.
Everything you need to know about the, about the housing authority.
The, the second thing I have is, and you can email this to me, and, and go ahead and copy the rest of the council on it, I'd like to see or for you to email the reconciliation or billing process of how we are billing recyclable pickups. And, and from that, I mean, does Pratt send us a bill every month and we pay it, or how does that whole process work?
Thank you.
That'd be much appreciated. And like an email's fine.
Okay. This is just flow of money.
Let's see, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Clerk.
I also received a call earlier, I guess last week, from the Caddo Parish clerk, asking whether or not we would be willing to do a joint meeting with the commission to talk about the new code. And I don't have the dates that he threw out, but it was on a Thursday and a Friday. Dates that the, might have been this week.
Well, it can't be this week. It can't be this week. Hey, yeah, Mrs. Sweeney, you can give us some information on that. Even though I did have a conversation with the president.
It was, it was the 3rd and the 4th of January.
Third and 4th?
Yes, not this week, but next week, yeah.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Sweeney, for coming up.
Sure.
I did have a conversation with Mr. Lynn. Did he, did he speak to you regarding that?
Yes, you sure did.
And the reason that I kind of agreed to maybe see if that was a feasible alternative to, I was going to, I was thinking about appointing a special committee to look at the UDC outside of the, after it was submitted to us.
Right.
But I think if, and, and talk to Mr. Lynn, that if we could meet jointly with a presentation from, from MPC.
That's right.
We can almost address our concerns and make recommendations, and then when that comes back to us for a vote, we can almost have our amendments or concerns addressed as a, as a final product.
Yes. Get your ducks in a row as the else thing goes, absolutely. Because the idea would be, since we already have a series of amendments that we made to the UDC from the MPC board approval on the 18th, we can share that with you, that may address many of your concerns, and those that are left over, we would have an opportunity to work on those. And I think the goal was, is that when, you're right, when it comes to a vote for both bodies, all those things would have been worked out ahead of time so that everything can move forward in a more united effort.
Both bodies will receive the same document and information.
That's correct.
And because we have met to parent those out.
That's right.
You see, and so you see a great benefit in that.
I do. My plan was to, to introduce it to you on November the 7th and 8th, and to do the same for the parish commission on the 14th and 17th of November. But the, but I think having this early meeting of either on the 3rd or the 4th, where we could come together and talk about the issues ahead of time would be tremendously valuable. And I'm more than willing to do whatever we need to do to make that happen.
Okay, feedback from, from council members?
I don't see how that's going to work.
Okay.
All you're doing is just going, going over stuff. If you don't have the votes on these amendments, then you're wasting your time.
Well, I mean, the, the intent, Councilman Flory, was that, I mean, the, the MPC board voted last Tuesday.
That's correct.
Unanimously.
Yes.
On the document as amended, that was amended. There may be amendments coming from this body, there may be amendments coming from, from the commission body. Each will present to us in advance the document that was approved by MPC in, in amendments. We, we, we would be then given opportunity to discuss those in full.
Correct.
And we be together collectively as the two, the two governing bodies to discuss or offer, it won't be amended until we get the document and move forward, but we can say that both bodies have agreed on these, these amendments. And that way, we can, we can, we can, we can, we can avoid that, that third step, and that was the third step was going to send it back to conference, which would be the, I mean, the master plan committee to, to sort of merge those, but we, we will be merging them ourselves prior to, prior to us adopting them.
Okay.
But I, I, I see the benefit in it, but, but I, because we won't be a voter on anything. It'll be, it'll be us as just collecting data from the MPC prior to us voting, so we won't have a, a pre notion of how we're going to vote until we hear from Mr. Sweeney.
And that meeting on the 3rd or 4th would be simply a work session, so you can explain, discuss, and I referred it always as inverted pyramid. We've gone from a lot of issues down to just a few remaining, and we're making that progress. So I think it will be very valuable that we will, our focus will be very clear after we have that meeting, so that when we come back to you guys to go through the process of the vote itself, a lot of those issues will have been worked out and we would have addressed them and clarified it, so that you're not going back and forth, because this thing's not a done deal till both bodies has approved it. So if one body approves one thing, another are different, you got to figure out how to work that out. And I think this is a great opportunity to get a step ahead of that process.
Any other council members have?
Corbin.
Mr. Corbin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I do appreciate that we'll get some additional details at our next meeting. Sure. I think that will be very helpful. I think as far as the joint work session, while I like the idea, I think that we're going to be pretty busy with budget from now to the end of the year. And, and I might push that a little further back in January with some proposed dates. I think that's, that's pushing it for us. Pushing it for me, I know, I'll speak for me.
Me too.
I'd like to push back a little bit in January to have that, have that joint session and then see what all we can work through. And that's certainly up to y'all. The only person of the, of the joint session would be, and I kind of, I'm just envisioning this out loud, is that even though you might have the joint session or joint session, work session in November, maybe, then we have the conversation, and even though I may introduce it to you on the 7th and 8th and then to the 14th and 17th, you might not take action on it until January, is what I'm kind of hearing. So it would probably be valuable to have some type of a, of a session before the end of the year that would help y'all at least get to that stage. I think that's at least what we're offering to you, so. But it is, it is ultimately your decision to do what you want to do, so.
Well, let me, let me just say, and Councilman Corbin is correct in that prior to December 8th.
Right.
It would be difficult because we're going to be, you know, full steam ahead. While, while it doesn't, I mean, whether we do it now, do it later.
Right.
This body's going to still probably not, not, not vote on it until January.
And that's kind of what I expect.
How would that?
Because of the holidays and the budget and all that stuff.
How, what was your, what was your anticipation as a guy, as a timeline from your perspective to the bodies?
To bring it to you in November.
Okay.
Hoping for a decision maybe by December, but realistically thinking January. And I built in enough buffer that if y'all didn't take a final vote on this until January, then that still allows us plenty of time for the implementation to occur on April 1st. I needed at least two months and I built in a third, a second, a third month, just in case there was some variation. Otherwise, the, the implementation date would push back to like May 1st as opposed to April.
So April 1st was your anticipated?
No intention of choosing that date, but you know what I'm saying? That's the intention of April 1st, but the intention was to, to get you to that point so that we could tell people that's when the switch turns on and all the new regulations occur and the new maps adopted, so.
Well, and we thank you, and.
Sure.
And I would, I would suggest, Mr. Clerk, that you would notify council, I mean, the commission entity along with Mr. Sweeney that this body feels that we cannot meet in this joint session prior to December 8th. Now, after December 8th, maybe we can consider a date that does not conflict with the holiday schedule, but, but I wanted them to know whether or not we meet or not, they can move on it, but if we, we won't be able to finalize our vote until, until the January, some of the January dates. But we, we willing and think, we think, and I do, the council members have expressed themselves, that a such a joint work session would be, would be, I think, healthy and beneficial.
Sure.
Because we'll know what each other's, right, we know what the left is talking about.
That's right.
Can I just interject to say, while I understand and respect everyone's thoughts on it, I do somewhat disagree. I mean, we have been looking at this, some of us, for four to six years, so, I mean, I feel fairly comfortable moving on it, even though we have the budget ahead of us, but I also recognize it may be in the minority on that, and that's okay, but, but, you know, it does, it has gone on a long time, and I hope that people have had a chance to get some questions answered. If there's something that, you know, you just don't like about it, then that's something that we need to talk about, but, you know, I hope that we understand what's in it because we've been looking at it for a long time, you know? We've gone over and over again and had more and more public meetings and, you know, it's, I don't, I don't want my son to grow up thinking, one day we're going to vote on that UDC of lore that I've heard about for decades, you know? I mean, so, I hope we do take action on it relatively soon.
Well, we, we, you know, we, again, this is important and we've heard, you know, we've been through a, a series of meetings and informational forums and workshop. How many have you held actually this year?
A total of nine, I believe, is what we've held events, and actually, I think maybe 10 now that I count the, the public hearings, but yes, yes, it's quite a letty of, and it's, we're going on 17 months of public input.
And, I mean, there's certainly going to be some issues that I think we, we're going to address that hadn't been addressed.
Sure.
I thought the meeting on Tuesday, the part that I called, pretty much included it all.
Pretty much so, yes.
Presented, and then the comments from the, from the, from the audience, and then your members' comments and their voting unanimously to accept it, I, I think it speaks value of the, of the work that you've done. I would congratulate you on that work.
Appreciate that.
So what we'll do, and, and it's not a, it's not a official meeting, it's a, it's an unofficial meeting, but I would like a forum of council members to be there.
Sure.
So you, if the, if the clerk will poll the council members with some dates, and if the majority of the council members can be there, maybe we can move on it, but if not, we'll wait.
Are we talking about after December 8th or?
Well, Councilman, Councilperson said he would prefer us moving, moving faster rather than, than slower.
Well, the date that was suggested was the 2nd and 3rd?
The 3rd or 4th of, of November. And, and understand, we would just meet like in the mayor's conference room. Yes, it is open to the public, but it wouldn't be any public comments, it would just simply be the council members and the commissioners around that table, and we would maybe visit for a couple hours and just hit the highlights and get feedback from y'all. That would be all that we'd be asking for, and that, I think, would be valuable in kind of narrowing it down. So it's doable if those dates, the 3rd and the 4th are workable, either one of those days, just, just let us know. We're flexible.
Clerk, the clerk will be back in touch.
Okay, I appreciate it very much.
I don't want to, I don't want to poll us now.
Sure.
Because we got a, we got a working weekend coming up. And we'll see how that goes and, you know, we only need a, if I were to notice to the public about us doing this, so the clerk, the clerk will.
Right.
Will poll us somewhere and the majority of us can be there, we'll, we'll try to be there.
I do know, just, just as a point of comparison, I know all of you weren't here, but when y'all adopted the master plan in 2010, that was in December of 2010, right in the middle of your budgeting process, so I know it can be done, but we got to take it one step at a time. Maybe we don't want to make it more complicated than what it is.
Well, I refer to my colleagues who will hear about that. But I, but again, we, we are conscious of what you're trying to accomplish. We have some new legislation that we got to, that's almost.
I understand.
Critical to what this, the direction this city's going to go.
That's right.
So we, we, we want to be patient and do what's right in both areas. So you'll be hearing from the clerk one way or the other.
Sure, I appreciate it very much.
And I think you'll hear from him, it'll probably be after the weekend when we meet and see how we feel about what was accomplished then, okay?
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and, and I don't want to respond or dialogue, I, I heard from Eric England.
Yes.
I don't want you to, I don't, I don't want to comment, I just want you to know that the administration.
Sure.
Is, is going to receive the information.
Sure. And do understand, just one thing, I'll just say, the Unified Development Code never addresses the port, because that's not something that will be addressed in the Unified Development Code. The jurisdiction of the MPC is addressed by the state legislature and by what was established by them decades ago, and that's as much as I'll tell you. I will forward to William Bradford, the city attorney, what I, my correspondence that I had with Mr. England, and so he can see where we're kind of at and see what the right direction is to go.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Sure.
And I say prior to our workshop or meeting that we don't want, I don't want, any business development or expansion to, to be impeded by anything that we present as a, as a code.
I agree.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, the clerk failed to anticipate how efficient the council would be today, and therefore, we scheduled the executive session for 4:30 PM, and it's not quite 4:30 PM, but a motion would, is in order to go into executive session at 4:30 PM to discuss matters relative to the following. Maria Michelle Boswell, AL versus City of Freeport, docket number 525.
Move.
497-B, First Judicial District Court, Caddo Parish, Louisiana.
It has been moved by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Bowman, that we will join into a executive session to take up the announced item at 4:30, so we have a five-minute recess, meet me in the council courtroom and conference room at 4:30, which is five minutes. We are joined for the executive session.